Wait a minute, now you're.
That's ours.
I want to see a map. I'm a map girl.
Not only is it ours, but the city owns it.
The Taco Bell?
The, the spot behind the Taco Bell, between the Taco Bell and State Line. Triangular piece. We own, we actually own that.
Wait, behind the Taco Bell?
By the Taco Bell.
Between the Taco Bell and, and, uh, and State Line Road.
I have Google Earth on my phone now. It's my new favorite toy. She is.
She is.
Go ahead and start it.
We'll call the July first, uh, night, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Leewood governing body to order. Welcome everyone. We'll begin by asking the clerks to call a roll, please.
Mayor Elkins is present and presiding. Councilmember Phyllis?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Sipple?
Here.
Councilmember Kane?
Here.
Councilmember Sunkel?
Here.
Councilmember Gayad?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Castor?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. I find that the entire governing body is present and accounted for this evening. We do have a quorum and we can move on to the business of the evening. With that, I would ask all to stand as they can and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Powell, does staff have any further, uh, changes or amendments to the agenda as it was most recently published?
No.
If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as it was most recently published?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Phil. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sipple. All those in favor of approving the agenda as it was last published, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it unanimously and the agenda is approved. We have no citizen comments or no citizens, I'm sorry, who signed in to provide comments this evening. So we'll move on to a proclamation that I have. This is a proclamation, uh, recognizing National Parks Week. And the proclamation that I am issuing to this evening is as follows. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Leewood, and whereas our parks and recreation open spaces and programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of our, of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas our parks and recreation across the state of Kansas daily maintain pools, trails, beaches, campsites, marinas, picnic areas, athletic fields, state parks, skate parks, dog parks, festival venues, gardens, visitor centers, historic and cultural attractions, and many other recreational facilities and amenities normally as unsung services, and whereas Kansas local parks generate over one billion dollars in economic activity annually with the service of parks and recreation professionals, and whereas there are over eight thousand programmers, managers, maintainers, landscapers, facilitators, lifeguards, coaches, event organizers, and caretakers who plan, provide, operate, and enhance the experience of our parks, recreation programs, and facilities in the state of Kansas, and whereas the city of Leewood recognizes the benefits derived from the service of our parks and recreation professionals, now therefore I, Mark E. Elkins, Mayor of Leewood, Kansas, do hereby proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the state, the city of Leewood to be affixed this first day of July twenty twenty-four. And with that, again, I would extend our thanks to, um, the members of our Parks and Recreation Department for all the things that they do, uh, for the citizens of Leewood and makes this, and make Leewood, um, one of the places that it is to live and work. Is there a representative from the Parks Department here tonight? If you could come forward, we'll have you introduce yourself and your role.
My name is Danielle Foster and I'm the superintendent of Recreation Services.
Well, we're glad you're here tonight. Steven, or Stacy? Thank you, Ms. Foster. Uh, there are no presentations or recognitions this evening, and I think we do have a number of, uh, matters under special business. Uh, we'll start with a resolution, amending resolution numbers fifty-two hundred and fifty-five ninety-six. Um, who wishes to be heard on this from staff?
Mr. Cobby.
Mr. Cobby, welcome. It's your call tonight.
Did you see us play rock, paper, scissors there for a second? Um, I'll have, uh, Kevin, uh, Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell also kind of stand for questions on the, the, uh, legal issues related to this. Essentially, tonight, we have two resolutions, um, that need to be amended, um, for purposes of the bonding authority. Um, I know that, uh, I believe both of these, the reason they're being amended is they had a maximum amount, but they didn't, um, include the cost of issuance and, and, um, so the carrying costs kind of put us over on at least the Parks Maintenance Building. I think that was the same, uh, on the fire station. I'm starting to get project confusion in my head when keeping them on my head. So, um, those two need to be done, and then, um, then we'll have those set and we can do the sale resolution with the bonds in item C. So these are all related, and we're doing these all now to be able to have the proper authorization to issue the bond, or get the sale resolution posted and, uh, do the bond sale, I believe, the first meeting next month.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cobby. And we'll, we'll kind of, for items A and B, we'll kind of have a joint discussion over both items. We'll, of course, call them, uh, individually for a decision, and then we'll go to item C and maybe talk a little bit more about the bonding process. For, but, uh, for Mr. Cobby right now, again, just to confirm, Mr. Cobby, for A and B, the, the overages, if you will, or the, the, uh, excess, excessive over the authorization, the original authorization numbers are all have to do, uh, with the cost of the bonding process. Is that right?
Yeah, and a lot of that had to do with, um, the time, the timing of him carrying over an extra year. Bonding costs weren't that high until the last year, uh, two years, and then they, they've increased enough to put him over that cap.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Cobby on either, uh, the Parks, uh, Maintenance Building or, um, Fire Station Number One? If not, um, I will call these individually. Uh, Mr. Powell, do I need a roll call on these two?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a motion to approve, uh, the resolution amending resolution numbers fifty-two hundred and fifty-five ninety-five relating to the authorization for constructions of the Parks Maintenance Building?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of approving, uh, the resolution amending resolution numbers fifty-two hundred and fifty-five ninety-five, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the resolution, uh, is unanimously approved. That would bring us to the, uh, item number B, the resolution amending resolution numbers forty-six fifty-two and fifty-five ninety-four authorizing the replacement of a fire station number one in the city of Leewood. Is there any, um, other discussion or questions for Mr. Cobby? If not, do I hear a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. A, discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of approving the resolution amending resolution numbers forty-six fifty-two and fifty-five ninety-four, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it and the resolution amending, uh, the resolution numbers forty-six fifty-two and fifty-five ninety-four is unanimously approved. That brings us to item number C, or letter C, which is a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds and general obligation temporary notes for the city of Leewood, Kansas. Uh, Mr. Cobby, would you like to go into detail or a little more detail anyway with respect of what you're asking for us to, to authorize here?
Sure, and again, um, any kind of legal questions or, um, maybe even the process. Kevin's here. Actually, Dave Artiberry, I believe, is online via Zoom, our financial, financial advisor. Uh, I'm just telling you pretty quickly that, um, this would authorize us to, uh, do the sale of the temporary notes, which is, um, estimated at fourteen million seven hundred and forty-five thousand, and then the, um, five projects which are listed in the memo, um, to do general bond obligation issuance on that, uh, with the total being forty-four point five, um, million dollars on those projects, and of course, the, the big three being the fire station, Mission Road, uh, the recent Mission Road project, and Parks Maintenance Facility project.
Thank you, Mr. Cobby. Questions for Mr. Cobby with respect to the issuance of bonds, uh, for the city of Leewood, uh, for this summer? Yes, Ms. Phil.
So, as I'm looking at the, the written one, there's the twenty twenty-three dash one temporary notes, there's the twenty twenty-four dash one, uh, temporary notes, uh, with the, uh, notes.
Deb, can you make sure your mic's on?
Oh, I'm sitting too far back. So, so there's twenty twenty-three, or temp notes, twenty twenty-four dash one, or temp notes, and then they have those projects called out, and then twenty twenty-four A is the, the general obligation bonds of those five projects. So I read that correctly against a comment?
Yes, and twenty twenty-three one are the ones we are paying off for this time, and, um, or, or those are the ones that are, that I have listed there are the ones that are left and carrying forward to twenty twenty-four. So I kind of had that for reference. The others that were on, uh, temporary notes that are rolling forward, um, are, are rolling forward to the general obligation bonds. So it's.
That's the part I'm not clear on.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll, let me, let me step back and make this, or go through it a little, uh, linearly, I guess. So the first step, uh, we currently have out fifty-six point three five million dollars of bonds. Um, we have to, we have to pay those off, so that the cost would be fifty-nine point two million dollars, uh, with interest. Um, from, from there, we are going to then, uh, issue, or we're going to pay those off with either temporary notes, general obligation bonds, or in one case with some cash. And so the new projects then, um, that are currently in place, the numbers that we were working with, the numbers we had borrowed for the six projects that are listed there under temporary notes, those are all going to continue on forward, and those number, that, so the number that we borrowed last year for those six projects was eight point five, that's going to increase to fourteen point seven four five. That's just to give you an idea of how much, you know, kind of how they're progressing, and then that last column is to tell you where we expect to end up when they're, when they're in permanent bond status. So it kind of gives you that, those steps. However, um, out of the fifty-six point three five million, um, approximately forty-four, forty-five million dollars of that is, uh, going away and being converted to general obligation bonds, and those five projects then listed under twenty twenty-four A, well, they, they, when you add them up, they come to that number, and they're actually in the, I didn't re-list the, the dollar values, but they're all listed out in the, uh, resolution themselves as well.
Thanks. That helps me a lot.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Phil. Other questions for Mr. Cobby? Yes, Mr. Sipple.
Uh, Mr. Cobby, uh, is the yield curve still inverted and does that pertain to municipal bonds? I'm just wondering, will our short-term temporary notes be more expensive than the long-term debt?
Um, and that is probably a Dave Artiberry question. Uh, and Dave, can you hear us and?
Yeah, yeah, I, I can hear you and, um.
I just.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, I, I heard your question. Um, the, the municipal bond yield curve is inverted, but it's not quite as much as the treasury bond yield curve. Uh, right now, you know, a one-year, highly-rated municipal bond is probably in an interest rate of about three point two percent, uh, and a ten-year is probably at an interest rate of about two point nine percent. So there is an inversion. Now, when the city sells its bonds, it's selling, you know, twenty-year bonds. It's not just selling, you know, ten-year bonds. The twenty-year rate is higher. I suspect that the borrowing rate between the one-year note and the twenty-year bonds, I think the twenty-year bonds will be higher, but it's not going to be a lot higher. Um, last year, the one-year note rate was three point six three percent, and the twenty-year bond rate that the city got was three point seven four percent. I suspect this year it's going to be, the numbers will be somewhat similar to that.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Additional questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the city to offer for sale, um, general, general obligation bonds, uh, and approving the form of notice, sale, and preliminary official statement to be used in connection with those, as well as, uh, authorizing advertisement of such sale in the manner prescribed in the, uh, by law?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Phil. Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Additional discussion concerning the pending motion? If not, all those, pardon me, in favor of adopting the resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the resolution is unanimously approved and adopted. Brings us to the consent agenda this evening. Are there items that individual governing body members would like to withdraw from the consent agenda for additional discussion? Ms. Kane?
Uh, yes, um, on the new agenda, it's item L, like Lucy, um, but on our original, if you're pulling the packet, it was O originally.
Ms. Harrison?
On the new agenda, no, I'm worried I got the wrong, G and K, please. Vended agenda, G.
K being the reference to the lease agreement?
Yes.
And G being the, um, the fleet management?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Ms. Kane, just to make sure I've got the right piece of paper in front of me, yours, um, has to do with the, uh, agreement between the city and Jonathan Mugmon Design LLC. Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Any other items to be pulled from, uh, the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda with the acceptance, exception of items G, K, and L. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gayad. Any additional discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of approving, uh, the consent agenda with the exception of items G, K, and L, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and, uh, the consent agenda with the exception of items G, K, and L is approved and adopted. We'll go to, um, Consent Agenda Item G, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign Seven Open-End Equity Lease Rate Quotes with Enterprise Fleet Management for the lease of certain vehicles, including five quotes for Naphide Manufacturing Company, I apologize if I mispronounced that, for equipment build-outs for vehicles list, uh, leased. Ms. Harrison, questions for Mr. Lay?
Um, so this is, this is separate from the other enterprise agreement that's already in place, or is this the one that, an amendment to what we've already discussed?
So we had the master agreement, which was just the overall agreement to lease vehicles, but every time we lease a new vehicle, we'll have a lease agreement.
Okay.
So for every vehicle we lease, there'll be a separate agreement, and then we'll also include, like, most of these have build-outs through Naphide, and so we'll include those in the lease.
Very good. My comment, question, concern regarding this is, is more about right, I know right sizing is our goal. Um, every time I drive out the lot, I see all these big pickup trucks and big SUVs, and I wonder how many people are climbing into those to go do the, the task of the job, and I'm hoping that we're picking the most efficient, fuel-efficient, small, I know it's more cool to do your job in a F-one-fifty, I get it, or a big giant, you know, Ford Expedition, but if, if, if people aren't hauling big things, if, if a two-door or a four-door sedan can be the, the vehicle for the fleet, I hope this is a place where we might be able to really save some money as opposed to those cars that have been sitting out there, um, all these years. So I know, I guess this is less about this particular one because this is a, I didn't understand that this was just a particular agreement, but just.
So to answer that question a little bit, so we are reducing the fleet out at City Hall by four vehicles. We're getting rid of the two vans. Parks has agreed to sell those off, and then we're going to eliminate two other vehicles, and then we'll just do a kind of a share. Public Works will manage the fleet, and then if, uh, anybody else needs to have a car, they can kind of check it out from us.
I love that. Excellent. Thank you. Nothing more? That being said, I'd move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Thank you, Ms. Phil. Uh, Mr. Lay, that was Mr. Lay, Director of Public Works, that was responding to, uh, Ms. Harrison's questions there. Are there any additional questions or discussion around consent item G? Mr. Sipple?
Are there going to be any other leases made in the remainder of twenty-four?
I don't believe so. So these are most of the vehicles that'll be replaced next year. So I don't, I think we're finished with the leases for this year.
Uh, it would seem to me as, and, and, and that's good. Where possible, we ought to do this once a year, rather than, you know, as it comes up, so.
They'll, they meet with us quarterly, and they'll meet with all the directors quarterly to go over the vehicle, the fleets, and determine which, uh, vehicles to order, and then we'll also try, as I mentioned, to right-size the fleet. If we have some vehicles that don't have a lot of miles, they're going to point that out to us. So we'll look at maybe minimizing the fleet even further.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving the resolution, uh, authorizing the mayor to sign seven open-ended equity leases, um, with Enterprise Fleet Management, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the resolution approving, uh, the seven open-ended leases with Enterprise Fleet Management is unanimously approved. We'll now go to item K, a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a five-year lease agreement between the city and Summer One Inc. in an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred dollars pertaining to copier leasing services. And Ms. Harrison, I believe that was yours as well.
It was. It is, and it, it falls in the same line of questioning. Um, a quarter of a million dollars feels like a lot of money for copying, copiers and copying in a, in a time when we feel like we've almost all gone paperless. We need paper. It's important.
It's just got such dirty looks. I, I, I'm here minding my own business.
Feel the love. Um, we, I mean, it really, our world is, we would have to admit that there's, I hope there are fewer copiers in the, in the, in the fleet, in this fleet than there were ten years ago or five years ago, and if there aren't, I would hope that maybe we would consider, before this was signed, a reduction.
So, uh, we, we don't have a lot of personal printers. We've kind of consolidated on multi-function. So keep in mind, it's not just printing. There, there, there're fax machines and some, there're scanners. It's a multi-function device.
Oh, yeah.
We have less than a dozen, half dozen, personal printers. We have twenty-six spread out all the city facilities. Um.
Twenty-six copiers around the city? Like, each fire station probably needs one and.
Yeah, they need one. And the, the, there's, we, this proposal's three different models. Uh, part of doing the audit, we actually went down to what they call a desktop model, which is kind of just basic printing functions, and I think we were like six or eight of those. Where before, we had more of the mid, mid-range multi-function. So we did try to trim it down as much as possible. Um, one of the other things we looked at was what would it cost to actually buy these outright? Okay, so it was roughly around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy the equipment, and based on what, look, doing the analysis, you basically, you're going to have to pay for the toners and the usage, and then if you want it to be under a maintenance.
Right.
Service contract. It was about year six where you would actually start to get in the green, and we just didn't feel like that made sense. I mean, in six years, you're going to start having problems. You know, by then, there's new models that come out. Um, but you basically, you know, if you look at the actual budget information, the one works, that's the, the toner, that's the service maintenance, so that's about two grand a month, so twenty-four thousand a year, a hundred and fifty thousand to buy it outright. So five, six years before you're actually saving money, and it, we just felt like it was more advantageous to.
Right. I guess I just, I work with Sumner One, I'm the Buick-sized copier in my own office, actually, and so I'm familiar with how my copier talks to them, and the toner magically appears, thank you for the X-Man. It's amazing. It's an amazing situation, but I also know that Sumner One isn't probably going to be the one to say, you know, I think we can do with five less copiers, city of Leewood. I, I mean, I, maybe they are, but.
I can tell you this, e- even with the current contract we have with Conic Minolta, their software that monitors usage across all the entire environment, we pulled that data and analyzed the last three years. We're still doing a lot of printing. I can't tell you exactly everywhere that we're doing it, but, um, part of this solution too is we're adding on a, it's called Paper Cut. It's a, um, it's a print management solution, basically where you can print, it'll follow you around any of the copiers, but it also, it also gives all the analytics and data, and we'll see every single thing that gets printed in the environment where we can kind of make some more informed decisions.
Okay.
The other thing I would say is, uh, in the past, we've always done three-year lease, and, uh, we got about a thirty-five percent discount by going to five-year. So that's where the thirty-five thousand dollars, this, this contract's thirty-five thousand dollars cheaper a year. Um, so it does sound, I mean, it, when you look at the number, it looks, I mean, over five years, I mean, but there's twenty-six of these.
Yeah, I know, and they're, they're important. I know they can staple and fold and do all the fancy things and scan and fax and all the, I mean, it's impressive, but I just wondered if, and I know you wouldn't want somebody from Public Works walking down to here to get their copies. That would be an incredible waste of people's time, but, you know, just hope that there are maybe a fewer, just considering the cost, if you think of each one being, you know, forty thousand dollars or something like that at the end of the day, but I just hope we're being as fiscally responsible as we can, and it's on us, I think, to do that in more than Sumner One or any vendor, but, so, that's all I had to say about that.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison.
Good to know you're doing it. I was just going to say, good to know you're doing it.
Other questions? Other comments? If not, is there a motion to approve, uh, the resolution, uh, authorizing the mayor to execute the five-year lease agreement with, uh, Sumner One?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Is there a second? I'm sorry, I lost that one.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. I appreciate that. Any further discussion of the, of the motion? If not, all those in favor of adopting the resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a five-year lease agreement with Sumner One, uh, in an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred dollars, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the resolution approving the execution of a five-year lease agreement with Sun, Sumner One, uh, is unanimously approved. Now call, um, item L from the consent agree, consent agenda, uh, a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an independent contractor agreement between the city and Jonathan Mugmon Design LLC in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars pertaining to providing a strategy for the. a strategy for the planning and implementation of a citywide comprehensive parks and trails wayfinding system, as well as park signage. Ms. Kane?
Yes, as I was reading the packet, and we just had the discussion about fire stations, and if you read further from Chris Claxton's staff report about the upcoming work that hasn't even started on the golf course maintenance equipment in the Tomahawk Creek Playground replacement, and the shelter replacement, and the other item that was on here about the bath house that's having geological problems, and we don't even know what's gonna be needed there, and I just, I just am wondering, I know that Danielle is here, and I, and I know that Chris Claxton was unable to be here, but it's more of a philosophical question at this point in time, is with the staffing way down, we've, our number two and our number three people, our number two person is gone, and number three person is extremely sick, and, you know, between capacity and our new strategic planning, I just dare say, my brain thinks, do we take a pause? Do we defer this until at least next week, or to our strategic planning? It's only, well, total, it's supposed to be only $75,000, but I just, you know, it's not, it's, as far as I can tell, it's not a safety issue, it's, it's a, it would be a nice to have someday if we were made of money, but my overwhelming feeling right now is we're anything but made of money right now, and so my tendency is to pull back on some of these, these projects that are not high, high priority, at least in my mind, and I'm only one person, you know, until we have a chance to strategically plan and look more carefully at some of these individual line items. Like I said, it's, you know, it's not car wrecks at intersections of the, the trails. We've never had them before. In a perfect world, would it be lovely to have? Yes, but, you know, again, there's only so much money, and, and we're already behind on the Tomahawk Creek Parkway, if you remember, and the, the Leewood, Leewood, they're trying to raise money to offset it, and here we hear is a different $75,000. So I just kind of feel like, let's, let's, is it time to pull, pull in, tighten our bootstraps, for lack of a better word? And so I guess, I guess it's a philosophical question that I would pose to the group.
Ms. Foster, I know this is not in your wheelhouse, but do you have a, any sort of a sense or, or comment relative to the capacity of Parks and Recreation, given that two of the senior managers are not currently in place?
I would defer to Chris for that answer.
That's fair enough. Any other comments? Ms. Philip?
I was just gonna ask, is this in this year's budget?
No, I don't believe so.
It is. Don is nodding.
Oh, it is. I'm sorry.
Don, why don't you, could you mind stepping forward so we, can we get?
That's all right. The, I think it was last year, went in and started this year, and I believe there's three years, $75,000 a year for three years is what we put in, and I think it's out of, out of the capital improvements fund, or is it, yeah. Is it three?
Ms. Stoddard?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to suggest that, given that Ms. Claxton couldn't be here this evening, my suggestion would be, there's nothing magical about this date this evening to have this approved. My suggestion would be, if you would consider moving this to the July 15th agenda, that would give her the opportunity to maybe speak to the larger issues that are the concern of Councilmember Caines.
Thank you, Ms. Stoddard.
Thank you for reminding me that it's 75 times three. To be honest, obviously, I didn't even remember that. So 75 times three is $225,000 on wayfair signage, you know, is, is again, it's in my mind, right at this moment, it would be lovely to have if we were made of money, but we have unknowns in the Parks and Rec Department, and we have all sorts of big projects that haven't even started, and that's, it's a fundamental question that I'm posing.
Ms. Philip?
I'm just trying to get, because it says 25,000 with 24,500. Is that one of three payments to make 75, or where's this 75 coming from when I'm seeing 24, 5? I'm just not following.
Well, the 24, 5, as I understand it, is just for the, the study, but we budgeted $75,000 total times three years, so 75 times three is 225,000, but, but to start this process, is somebody telling us, we need this sign on this corner to point towards City Hall? That part costs $25,000 to hire this company, Jonathan Mugman Design, to do that for us.
So a question, was there, part of the thought was, we're trying to get this done before the World Cup shows up, and was there any timing in that, or any talk about that?
I, I've never heard it, and I'm on Parks and Rec, and so is on Chuck. We've never heard, we've never seen, or we've never heard that that was tied. I could be missing something, but we've never heard that that was, there was a reason other than, you know, somebody suggested it at some point in time, and I don't even know who that person was.
And other municipalities are moving in this direction with waveharing signs. Overland Park and Olathe and Lenexa are moving in that direction, and we wanted to be part of that overall network of trails and that type of thing. But I tend to agree with Mrs. Kane that this is certainly something we could defer until 2025 and not miss a beat. It kind of goes back to my sentiments during the budget hearings in terms of, at some point, we're gonna have to start looking at being a little more frugal. This might be a first step, would make me feel better, so I, I would like to second the motion that Mrs. Kane had, that we defer this.
I'm not, did, did we have, did we, oh, pardon me. Did we have a motion to continue it yet? So I think you may have seconded a motion that hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, I, I did not make that motion, but that was my intent. So my, my, I won't intend it, I'll do it. I would move that we defer this subject matter to the July 15th meeting, when Ms. Claxton is available to, for further discussion.
And I think that's fair. So we have a motion to continue item L to the July 15th meeting, and we have a second for Mr. Sipple. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of continuing item L, the resolution relating to an agreement with Jonathan Mugman Design LLC relating to the, a strategy for planning and implementation of a citywide comprehensive, comprehensive parks and trails wayfinding system, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and item L is continued to July 15th by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane, and thank you, Ms. Foster. So that brings us to the mayor's report. I have a relatively light report tonight. First of all, I wanted to express the, the city's thanks to the Leewood Community Foundation for partnering, partnering with us in sponsoring the appreciation lunch for all city employees on June 20th at the lodge at Ironwoods Park. There were a number of us there. It's a great example of the ongoing partnership that we have as a city with the community foundation. I think that's one of the things that was the original conception behind the community foundation. We had a great turnout on a really hot day, and all the city employees who attended really enjoyed the event, but those of our, our folks from Works, our Public Works and Parks employees who work outdoors particularly enjoy the opportunity for an air-conditioned space for a lunch break, and an opportunity to speak with the members of the, of the foundation, and those of us from the city who were there, and it was just, it's become a great event, and I think the, the employees really enjoy it. Also, I want to commend everybody, I think most of us were there at one time or another. Some of us had grandchildren, some of us didn't, at the open house for fire station number one on Saturday. It went from 10 until 2. It turned out to be a great event. We, we went through over 400 hot dogs to start with. Beyond that, our guesstimate is that we had about 1,000 people there, and, and it, people were coming and going all the time, and just because Murphy's Law is always at work, and because we had a bunch of kids who loved it, and we actually had a coal right in the middle. It was a little bit of a challenge for the, the firefighters, because they're not used to pulling their trucks out with four or 500 people in their bay and in their driveway, but there was a suspicion that maybe the siren was a little louder than usual, pardon me, as they pulled out of the bay, but it just added to the excitement of the moment. And there was a ton of stuff going on, for those of you who might not have been there. We had, I don't know, six or eight CPR dummies there, and we had little kids being instructed by firefighters about how to do CPR, and then we had medium-aged kids, and we had a couple of seniors, like my colleague on the left and myself, who were refreshing ourselves on hands-on CPR, and it was a great event. Also was the first opportunity in kind of the, the opening of the renewal, because I know at least four of you here, if not five of you here, have been through this years ago, but to renew our efforts to plan for what to do with the space and program the space at 96th and Lee, and now that the fire station's in place, and thanks to Ms. Stoddard, who did yeoman's job. She was there for all four hours, at the table, manning the table, talking to residents about what their thoughts are on what ought to happen at 96th and Lee, and we had a number of residents, a large number of residents, who came specifically for that purpose, and they had a myriad of ideas, and, and Mr. Sunkel was there, I think, for virtually the whole time, and again, was, was interacting with folks from, from his ward, as was Ms. Philip, and so it was a really good event, and, and my thanks to the fire department. It took basically all hands, but it was a great opportunity for me, at least, to, to speak to a number of the firefighters and find out what's really going on in their minds, and so it's, the fire department does a lot of public interaction in the course of the year, but this one in particular was, was excellent. So again, thanks to the fire department, it was an excellent event. Also, probably most everybody knows it, the city's 75th anniversary sculpture reaching has been installed, and the lighting has been installed. I got emails, or I got, at Boy Scout camp yesterday, I got texts from a number of my colleagues here on the dais who were sending me pictures and videos of the sculpture all lit up. Hopefully today's rain did not interfere with any of the electronics.
It was lit on the way in.
Excellent. And it's been programmed, so it should be proudly presenting the red, white, and blue on Thursday when we're here. So that's, that's very exciting. Still some landscaping to be done, and that landscaping probably is not going to get done, even at the barest raw issues before Thursday, given as wet as it was down there today, but we're, we're working on that, and someone will have to help me, because I didn't write this in my notes, but we heard today that we're looking at a dedication for the item on September the 26th, I believe, if my memory is correct. And so we'll look forward to everyone being there for that, and we will certainly invite, former Mayor Dunn to be there, because this was a project that she had a great deal of interest in. She did email me today to inquire as to whether the rains would have an impact, and so I'm glad to hear that it was lit when you all came to the meeting tonight. And that's a great segue, actually, to my last item. Just to remind everybody of the city's Independence Day celebration on Thursday. It's become a tremendous tradition for the City of Leewood, and invites people from all around the region to our fireworks display. The kids' activities and entertainment will be open from 6 until 9:30 p.m., along with a variety of food trucks, of the band twice on Sunday, which I understand is quite a band, for those of you who are at the 75th anniversary. I think that's the same band that played there, and this time they'll play in front of a much larger group of people than they did at the 75th anniversary. As I say, it's a great Leewood tradition, and I hope that all of you and your families can join in celebrating Independence Day in Leewood. Ms. Kane?
We got an email about inclement weather even perhaps Thursday, so if they're pulling the fireworks, how will we let our people know?
Ms. Stoddard?
Yes, I visited a bit with Ms. Claxton about that this morning, and in that event, we'll watch the weather forecast very carefully, and we will get out through all of our social media channels and all of the possible channels that we have to get outward if we need to cancel that event, and in that event, we do have some agreements with the, the fireworks contractor and others to be able to reschedule that for a different date if, if we need to. So hopefully, the weather will cooperate, and we'll have a wonderful evening, but we have some plans in place in case we need.
Thank you.
And then the, the absolute last comment that I just thought of, I want to thank Mr. Powell and his team, and Sam in particular, for doing such a great job in communicating out the results of the citizen survey through social media. I mean, that, that survey was long, and there's a lot to digest there, and they've done just an excellent job of putting it into bite-sized pieces with some photographs and some other things that make it easier for, for us to communicate the results of that survey, and again, just great job, and please extend that thanks to the communications department, which is going to increase by one in the very near future. So congratulations, congratulations to you on that hire as well. That concludes my remarks and takes us to council members' reports. Anyone have something for the good of the order? All right. Other, other than congratulations to Ms. Geyed, we're all very happy for her.
It's on the record.
It's on the record, and she is very pleased that I did that, I'm sure. It's, it's absolutely her nature. That, that brings us to the city administrative report. Ms. Stoddard, can you enlighten us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This isn't in my written report, but I did want to mention my thanks to the various departments that were involved in responding to this morning's flash flooding conditions, that we had the public, or the PD, the police department alone responded to 31 calls for service between 11:30 and 1:30 today regarding flooding roads, stalled cars, other hazards related to heavy rainfall, and again, we had a lot of our crews out, dealing with road closures and that kind of thing. At this point, we do have all the roads open with the exception of Lee Boulevard through City Park. That particular roadway will remain closed through mid-morning tomorrow so that we can clean up that area. There was quite a bit of mud that went over the roadway there, and we'll need to clean the streets and have an opportunity to do that. I did want to report back to you that we did, in fact, have funds in hand related to the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA reimbursement for the July 2023 storm event. We did receive a check in just a little over $163,000 from the federal government related to our, our operational expenses relating to that windstorm event. We do still expect that remaining $9,000 some dollar check from FEMA for the administrative fund reimbursement, and again, my thanks to Colin Fitzgerald, Kristen Love, Paul Dunn, and Maria Betsworth particularly for their time and effort in creating the records and documentation necessary to receive this reimbursement, and I would also add David Lay to that. We did hire a strategic communications director, and we're able to announce that Beth Brittenstein will be taking that position starting Monday, July 15th, so she will be here at that meeting, and will have an opportunity to be introduced to you all. We're really excited, because she brings 20 years of experience in broadcasting, marketing, and strategic communications to us in her prior roles, and we just think she'll be a great fit for our communications efforts. There's some information related to heat safety for you, which I know is a concern this time of year. Mayor Elkins highlighted the July 4th celebration. We do have a nice briefing on our website that shows the different activities and the schedule in case anybody needs to double-check that for Thursday. Also, related to the strategic plan, we are working diligently in getting those dates scheduled, so I wanted to make sure, in the report, there includes the two dates that we do have scheduled at this time. Session one, which would be Monday, August 26th, from 6 to 10 p.m. That is with the full governing body. Session two, which will be Monday, September 9th, from 6 to 10 with the full governing body, and then we're working on scheduling the session three, which would be focused on describing the future state and the future long-term vision, defining four to six major goal areas for the next two to four years in the context of the larger vision, and, and then we will also be working with the KU Center to schedule some time to work with our management staff, to work on setting how to develop measurable goals and tactics that relate to the strategic plan, and I also wanted to note, we are working with them as well to gather input on organizational values from the full City of Leewood employee team. So more to come on that. As soon as we hear back from everyone, we will get the rest of the dates set and get a full, comprehensive calendar sent out to you. I did want to spend just a little bit of time on this next item, which deals with homeless services center funding participation, so you may have funding participation. So you may have read that Johnson County has been working on developing a homeless services center and working to secure a former hotel site in Lenexa near 95th and I-35 for that center. The county has selected a vendor, Restart Incorporated, which would operate the center. And the center must clear several regulatory processes with the city of Lenexa, including a special use permit. And there's also some things that the county needs to do due diligence wise related to closing on the property. But in anticipation in anticipation of this project, we recently became aware that they may there may be some financial participation that is requested of cities from Johnson County and Restart to support ongoing operational costs. So we had learned about this after the most recent budget session, I think just right after that you all had that meeting. And what has been shared with us so far from the county suggests that the county would fund the first $50,000 of operational costs along with a proportional share, which is based on population for the townships. And then it was proposed that the 430,000 in total operating expenses then be split between the other Johnson cities, Johnson County cities, resulting in a 2025 request for Leewood in the amount of $25,920.48. The proposal doesn't include assigning a share to the city of Lenexa for financial participation. And that is due to the impact that Lenexa has relayed for the change in the use of the hotel from a commercial property to a government use and also the impact of monitoring the special use permit related to the operation of the center. The Board of County Commissioners did discuss this at a meeting last Thursday when I was preparing my update for you. I don't know that I have anything new to share, although they did pass a motion to direct an action item that would be placed on one of their future agendas related to their particular share of it. So at this point, I don't have in hand, there's not been any formal request extended to us beyond what I have forwarded to you and what I've relayed here this evening. But this would would likely be an item for discussion the next time that we bring up the budget. So when we have the budget public hearing, this will be some information. We may have some additional materials by that point because at this point I don't have a particular date that the county is asking for this feedback from cities. And I know all the other cities are somewhat in our in our position of receiving this request and and working it in because many of them had already started their budget processes as well. During the county meeting, it was characterized somewhat as a pledge from cities because it was indicated that the funds wouldn't be needed necessarily for until late 2025 when the center actually opens because they they'll need to acquire the building, remodel the building, and and then it'll take some time to get it started up. So as we receive additional information, if we do, we'll certainly pass it on to all of you. And that is all that I have for the update.
I would just add to Ms. Stoddard's comments on this support fund that I just today received a request from the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners to to meet with me. Did not indicate what his agenda was, but I'm fairly confident that this is probably near the top of his agenda. So if you all and it's gonna, I'm not going to meet with him, I don't think until later on towards the third week of July. So if you all have thoughts or comments that you'd like to share with me privately, please feel free to do so. It has been a little bit of an unusual process. I don't know that I've obviously I don't have the experience that a number of my colleagues around the bench have, but I don't recall hearing about a process by which there'd be a voluntary contribution requested for a countywide exercise. There can be a fairly compelling story told, and I don't mean to suggest it's fictional when I use the term story, that this this shelter in earnest of the benefit of the entire county and perhaps the entire county should support it in some way. But both Diane and I are still trying to kind of get our heads around just what's what's involved here. So again, feel free to call me or email me or if you want to sit down over a cup of coffee, I'm happy to do so. Ms. Kane?
For whatever this is worth, I've been on a board of two shelters that deal with homelessness for, gosh, almost 20 years now. So when I read this, I immediately called our our executive director and she's with Avenue of Life and his name is Desiree Moniz. And I said, are you aware of this and and this Stephanie person that was with Restart? So she said that they actually, she was, she Desiree, who I've known for 20 years, recommended this Stephanie person. She said she works closely with her and Casey Mo and they case managed 13 of their family units on the Kansas City Mo side with their empowerment program, it's called. And she is Restart now is responsible for the 24/7 work with the homeless in Johnson County and will be doing one similar in Wyandotte County. So in Avenue of Life now deals with the homeless families that have school age children. So she said, we'll partner on units in this facility with for their families that are housed and housing them to closer to their new jobs helps them as they save to prepare to be housed. So she says this woman Stephanie is amazing, truly a lovely, intelligent person. The old executive director is long gone. I could I could talk for days about her, but this person is supposed to be wonderful. And 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 Restart's been around a long time. If if you're familiar with that quarter and they moved, you know, Mo moved all the homeless to that one quarter years and years ago. But so anyway, I checked up on it in her and and got nothing but glowing reports for whatever that's worth. But it is a new concept, right, for us or for Johnson County as well as Wyandotte County, as well as asking all the cities to pledge. But we do pledge for the alcohol and the drug. We do do that already. So it's kind of kind of sort of that way, but not exactly. But I was, I felt better reading this after talking to her because she was well aware of what in the need and and what it would do for the community. So it's not like we're going and finding a homeless person on a corner and sticking them in this facility. It's not going to be that at all, which not to say that there is not a need for that, but that's not what this will be from what I'm being told.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Thank you very much. Any other comments at this point? I know you haven't had the chance really to digest the idea. Hopefully I'll have more from Mike when I meet with him later on in the month. Yes, Ms. Harrison?
To clarify, the 25,000 would be a request annually, right? Not a one time, let's get this thing started gift.
And that was the 2025 amount. I think that they had a
And it would probably creep up.
A chart in the materials and it it looked, it seemed like it went up a small amount projected over the next few years. But but it was close to that total.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say, again, I don't have the Restart. One of the reasons, at least it was reported in the press and that I'd heard in a meeting of the mayors was that Restart, because they've been around so long, have an excellent reputation for generating revenue and income themselves. And so there is a hope, and I'm always the one that says that hope is not a strategy, but there is a hope that once they get their feet on the ground that over time, and it may not be 2026, it may not be 2027, but at some point in time they will be self sustaining. And that's one of the reasons that there was actually a competitive bidding process amongst agencies to to take the lead on this. And Restart was a successful bidder in that request for proposals.
Well, again, I know this weird stuff, but about $76 million flood goes into our metro for this this segment of society every single year. And Restart's been a major player for a long time. So I don't know that that what you just said, I don't, if I had to be a betting person, I'm not so sure that that it will be self funding, but hopefully it will. But it's not like the money's not coming into the metro, you know, for this purpose. It's just how is it being spent and where is it being spent? So it's a lovely idea and maybe it'll work. But, you know, funding is always a major, major issue.
Absolutely. Any other comments for right now? It'll probably come up at a work session, probably in the context of of the budget here in the near future, which does bring us to the next series of meetings we have coming up. Help me, Mr. Powell, are these already on the calendar? Do we need to approve any of these?
Those are already on the counter or on the calendar, but we do have one more item on the agenda under new business.
Ah, thank you. Thank you. I skipped right over that. I appreciate that. And is that Mr. Klein? Ordinance relating to lighting nuisances?
That's Mr. Torres.
Ah, Mr. Torres. I thought the audience looked awful blank out there. That's why I thought we were done. Welcome, Mr. Torres.
He was ready for you to skip over it, too.
Good evening, Mayor Elkins and members of city council. Travis Torres, Director of Building and Code Enforcement. I'm before you tonight with the proposed revision of our lighting nuisance ordinance. Some background, in February of 2023, the governing body directed staff to look into potential updates to the ordinance to better address objectionable lighting. So just to kind of summarize some of the considerations that are in the proposed ordinance, we did look at the foot candle requirement. We were, we're going to make, we would propose to maintain the .5 foot candles at the property line. That matches LDO requirements from commercial developments to residential zoning districts. And that seems like that's worked well there. So we wouldn't, we didn't propose to change anything with that. We did add language that lighting shall not unreasonably interfere with the normal use or enjoyment of nearby private property. Light intensity, timing and duration are all factors that could be considered with that. And so I think that will help us on some of those cases where it, you know, it meets the .5 foot candles at the property line, but but maybe it's extremely bright or for some other reason, the time of day that it's on or time of night that it's on, we could potentially run a run a case on those under that new language. We did expand the definition of a primary structure to include places where we normally would see lights on with accessory uses and have been widely accepted. Dwellings, garages, decks, porches, screened porches and pool cabanas. Anywhere outside of that, you should, it would be only low intensity landscape lighting would be allowed. And you still could have violations with lights that are on those primary structures if it was interfering with the enjoyment of a neighboring property. So and then the the other main change we had was we removed just fixture language that was outdated in in the ordinance, difficult to enforce. You know, we're only allowed to see what we can see from the right of way unless we're invited on private property. Even from private property, we don't know the type of light fixture. So some of that stuff had never, we'd never run a case using that light fixture language and we didn't see it duplicated in anyone else's ordinances. So we just got rid of that part of it. I did want to provide just a little bit of background. Hopefully this is on.
No, there you go. That's good.
It's good down.
Down, down, down. Okay. Good.
So, you know, we haven't had a lot of lighting nuisance inquiries. You know, when I looked in and pulled the pulled the research on it, you know, we're like two or three inquiries a year. That doesn't mean they're not necessarily out there, but we just don't get a lot of those inquiries on lights. You know, we had 17 formal cases that we ran since 2011 and maybe another 10 or so inquiries that, you know, we went out, we measured at the property line, they weren't in violation. Some of those I think we could capture with the new language in the ordinance because if if we do feel that it's, you know, unreasonable or interfering with the neighbor's enjoyment, then we could send notice and hopefully have that conversation and have the nuisance, you know, minimize or remove. Most of the cases we've had have been commercial establishments that did not have approvals for lighting. You know, that's pretty straightforward. It's got to go through planning commission, governing body, sport courts that had administrative approval that maybe were using lights to light up the sport court, which would require governing body approval. And then just objectionable lights not attached to a primary structure. So that's kind of the background on that. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Questions? Yes, Mr. Siffold.
Do you have any open cases now pending?
We do not have any open cases. So we did have just a few recently. One of the ones that actually doesn't fall, maybe the only one of those 17 formal cases where I think the neighbor didn't like the brightness of a TV on a neighboring property. And there was, so there was a strobe light and a floodlight directly lighting up the neighbor. You know, we sent notice and just had that conversation that, you know, the TV inside wasn't necessarily in violation, but, you know, a strobe light would definitely be in violation of the ordinance. And so we got that worked out. But we don't, we don't have any current open cases for lighting nuisances.
Thank you, Mr. Siffold. Yes, Mr. Castor?
Yeah, I just had a question again, just because again, the way I would read this if I was a homeowner would be, you know, certainly under the lighting nuisance, you know, one being the foot candle, that's very clear. And the last one, if it's mounted on the primary structure, very clear. That second one where it's unreasonably
Yeah.
It just is vague enough to where and I also didn't see in the ordinance, let's say the homeowner doesn't agree that that it's really causing a nuisance to the neighbor. Or I was even thinking, what about if some other person just driving through turned this homeowner in, really isn't bothering the neighbors at all. But, you know, again, that's something that is brought to the city's attention. So if the homeowner disagrees, I guess what's the escalation process for them to try to get that that decision?
You know, those would be things we'd visit with. And we talked about that as we were developing the ordinance. You know, it is objectionable. You know, we would have to find that, you know, if we went out there and we're like, hey, yeah, this seems like, we agree, this seems unreasonable, then we would probably run a case on it. But, you know, on those ones that are somewhere kind of in between and it doesn't meet the half foot candle, we'd probably have to get more evidence from the probably the person that's inquiring about the light, you know, as far as, you know, is it lighting and it's lit up all night? Or if, you know, get some more factors probably and visit with the prosecutor about it to see if we had a case to bring, you know, ultimately, we would visit with legal to see if we had a case because if we run notice and if it goes to citation, then we would
Right. And there's also a penalty of jail time, too.
The hard part is, is that we did consider some, you know, more specific requirements such as we had before with the fixtures and such. But, you know, we don't have, we would have to have the person we're noticing incriminate themselves. And we don't even like to send notice unless we already have the evidence to send notice because if they don't respond to the notice, it ends up in a citation. So it really kind of leaves us, you know, so we were considering like Kelvin temperature scale and the temperature of the light, you know, as far as the warm, you know, if it's warm yellow or if it's, you know, the wider it gets and onto the blue scale, you know, we were considering some of those things, but it's just information we wouldn't readily have available from the right of way or even from an adjacent property. And with the limited amount of inquiries that we've had, I do think the language in there, you know, so we're talking about maybe 10, 12 cases, a case a year, honestly, that we haven't maybe been able to run a formal case on it because it didn't meet the half foot candles. And in this case, I feel like it does give us the ability to, you know, is it interfering with, is it reasonably interfering with the neighbor's enjoyment of their property? You know, so if we could, if we feel like it is that, then we could run a case. But there is some, it is somewhat objectionable there. And we definitely rely on legal for guidance if we're running into one of those kind of 50 50s. I mean,
So right now, there's no escalation process for the homeowner who is cited to try to appeal that decision or it would go through the legal process, they'd be cited and then they'd show up at municipal court and plead their case?
Potentially, potentially would to defend themselves, right? And then if they were able to, yeah, defend that, no, we think it's still reasonable and we want to keep it. I mean, ideally, hopefully, we would work out those situations to where, you know, it wouldn't go to citation and we could, you know, handle those under the notice and and hopefully satisfy all parties involved with with whatever the lighting inquiry was about. But there always is that potential, absolutely.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Harrison?
Travis, was there any conversation about timers and, you know, when Costco started selling those landscape lights, those cute little Edison bulbs that everybody could string up around their patios and then they're on all night, all night? string up around their patios, and then they're on all night, all night, you know, like, but nobody's out there, and I don't know if it's like pseudo-security lighting, or they just don't know how to work a timer, but it seems to me that those, maybe we could ask that those be turned off, that outdoor patio lights be turned off at midnight or something?
Yeah, it's just setting that time in there that you, you know, for the most part, I'd say string lights have become widely acceptable, you know, in, in the last decade, I would say.
Absolutely.
So you see those out there all the time, just ambiance lighting for persons patio, deck, whatever, and, and right, if they're used, if, at a reasonable time, for a reasonable duration, you know, we haven't received at least a lot of those complaints. And I think there is room in the ordinance, and especially if it's not attached to a primary structure, you know, and you've got lighting strung all the way around your property. But you do see like even lighting, just, you know, a lot of people use those light posts that have just, it's that landscape lighting, and they're solar lights, and, and they might be lit up, and they're not very bright, I don't, you know, all night long. So I, you know, we hesitated, I guess, to put in, you know, you can have them on till midnight, or, you know what I mean? Like sometimes if you set that midnight in there, then everybody's got them on till midnight, and some people don't like them one past ten, or, you know, so it's hard to find that number in there, and with the, you know, not that many complaints or inquiries about it, I, you know, it just, we didn't set a time in there. I understand definitely that. I think we could run a case if someone's leaving their lights, I, I think the ordinance would allow that, if someone's leaving them on at unreasonable hours of the night, any lights, you know, but there are two people out there that desire that security lighting, too. So it's just like a balance of, you know, that property owner's rights to secure their property and feel secure on their property-
Right.
-but also balancing that with the neighbor. Half a foot candle, again, that's what we are at from commercial developments, you know, with our lighting studies to residential zoning districts, so, you know, that's a pretty high standard, I think, in and of itself, is the half-foot, half-foot candle, so, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. Other questions? Mr. Sippel?
Travis, do you have a, a rule of thumb as to how much one-half of a foot candle is, in terms of how bright that is? I mean, could you read a newspaper using a half a foot candle?
I probably couldn't, because I'm in denial, I need glasses pretty bad.
I, I don't know what that amount of light is. I guess I'm trying to work through that.
It's one candle, like, so imagine a half a candle lit at the property line, is basically what that is, at least, you know, so like when we're doing commercial inspections and emergency lighting, and everything's got to be at least one-foot candle at the perimeter or whatever. That's the way I've always understood it, it's like if one candle was lit.
Well, back in the day, a lot of people did their work at night using one candle, you know.
So, yes, I mean, so it'd be half of a, half of a candle, I guess, of light.
Thank you. Mr. Torres, or, I have a couple of questions, following up on what Dr. Castor said. I am concerned that, you know, the, the use of the term unreasonable, are, are there other, and, and codes enforcement is new territory for me, are there other ordinances that you have in your, your repertoire that established that as a standard, that some action by a homeowner or by a property owner can be cited, because in your judgment, what they're doing is unreasonable?
Um, I'd say there's probably a policy involved with most of our ordinances, as far as interpretation of a lot of our different ordinances. I mean, I would say even like, Marcie doesn't like, I hear, she's jerking at things over there, so I don't know. That may be my sign to not say that. I, I, we like, we like for there to be no interpretation, absolutely would love that. I do think like, just even though, even weeds and like plant growth, you know, what's, someone's cultured plants is someone else's weeds sometimes, honest, I mean, you know, so it's like there is some interpretation that goes on there, I would say. I would have to like, think about on the spot, other-
Ms. Knight, are you aware of any?
Yeah.
You prosecute these.
Yes, Marcie Knight Legal, I would liken it to barking dogs, and that's kind of what we fashioned it after, that some people can tolerate barking dogs and some people can't, and if it goes to court, it would have to reach an unreasonable stage, and so some of the elements that you would look at is time of day, how long is it going on, how long has it gone on, and so that's why some of those similar factors are in here for the lighting.
So barking dogs is an example where there is a, a reasonable standard that's applied?
Yes.
Okay. That's good to know. And then the, to follow up on Ms. Harrison's questions and comments, I know that back in the day, when I was doing planning commission stuff, oftentimes with commercial applications, the city would, would enforce a stipulation of terms of a time of day. I, I can remember distinctly, for example, the, the patio at, oh, the, the place in Mission Farms-
Rye.
Rye, that they, that their application for the work they did there, one of the things that was conditioned upon was that they wouldn't have lights, their patio lights on, that there's those kinds of lights that Ms. Harrison's talking about, on, I think, after eleven o'clock or something like that. Is, is there any taste amongst codes enforcements to have some sort of objective standard like that for, for residential areas?
Um, I mean-
Again, you, you have the issue that it depends, you may have a day sleeper or whatever, you, you kind of have to take the neighborhood as you find them, I guess, but.
You know, just with security considerations, for some people, I think I would hesitate, but again, we take direction from you all on, on those things, just given the number of complaints and that, again, people do desire some security lighting, so I would just hesitate probably a little bit to say, hey, all, you know, lights have to be off at eleven, and then if you're, if you were just doing some lighting and not other lighting, it just gets, you know, you get a lot of gray, so much gray area that you, it's very difficult, but.
So, so one last question, this is actually from my colleagues on the dais here. I, I note that this came to Mr. Torres as a result of a request by the governing body. For those of you who were here in February of 23, can you enlighten us on, on what the thought was, and does this address the concerns that you had when you referred it to Mr. Torres back in February of 2023?
I like your word of enlight, your term enlight.
I think he's willing to do that.
That was very clever.
I think he's willing to do that. I think his memory's better than ours, so I'm-
Well, it was a brief discussion here. Andrew Osman was, was who brought it to council in a council member's report, which the minutes were attached, they were, it was very brief discussion, it was a long meeting that night, it was at the very end of the long meeting. It was probably under a five-minute discussion and just kicked back to us to look at, and we had known for some time, too, that it was outdated, too, the lighting nuisance ordinance, all those fixtures, LEDs weren't, aren't even in those fixture requirements, and so we knew it needed to be updated anyway, and, but he brought it forth based off of, you know, it was based off of a, a house up north, a new build, that was pretty bright with security lighting at night, but probably not that much different than what you would see like in the hills of Leewood. It just, but it was on a street where there's no streetlights around houses that weren't modern houses, you know, again, a tear-down, kind of the tear-down rebuild thing, where someone's building a more just modern home with security lights in a darker, along a darker street with no streetlights, so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion relative to new business item A and ordinance amending Chapter 11, Article 8 of the Code of the City of Leewood?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Phyllis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of adopting-
Mayor, we'll need a roll call.
Okay, we need to work on getting these into my agenda here, Stephen. They're all ordinances, and sometimes they need roll calls, and sometimes they don't, but I appreciate you looking after me this way. So we'll move to a roll call vote. If you're in favor of adopting ordinance amending Chapter 11, Article 8 of the Code of the City of Leewood, please indicate by saying aye. If you're opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Mr. Powell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phyllis?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sippel?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Castor?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Gayad?
Aye.
Councilmember Sunco?
Aye.
The ayes have it on a unanimous vote, and the ordinance amends Chapter 11, Article 8 of the Code of the City of Leewood. We have meetings on the calendar, so I don't think there's need for an action there. If I understood Mr. Powell correctly, we'll next meet at, on July the fifteenth, and we will have one item that's been continued to that meeting, and we'll have a normal meeting at 7:00 PM. So there's no other business to come, as, oh, I would remind, apparently we're taking pictures, headshots, so even though Ms. Kane says she's had headshots so many times, you get another opportunity, so.
What time?
Stephen, what time?
Probably at around six o'clock. We'll send out a reminder, and I'll get with Sam to, I think, Councilmember Sunco did his today, and it took five minutes?
Yeah, maybe five minutes. Took us like two minutes to walk out there, and-
And they had to take, they had to take a number of shots of Mr. Sunco, so with the rest of them.
Yeah, we never got a good ones, but, you know, we just gave up.
All right, we'll see you all around six on the fifteenth. Thank you all.